Okay, this is City of Mill State, Georgia. Board of Mayor Commissioners Work Session. It's April twenty two, uh, April twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. It is five fifty one. I would like to call the meeting to order. We have an agenda before us to have a motion to adopt.
So mute.
Mike, do you have a second?
Second.
Go into the line while I say hi. I'll be saying hi.
Hi.
Okay. All right. First item of discussion, landscape contract proposal discussion. Mr. Andrew.
Yes. As a part of the reorganization of the Public Works Department, there were two service areas that had been proposed to contract out for. One being sanitation, which has been executed and will begin on May thirteenth. Subsequent to the process to solicit a vendor for that service, we also requested from the board and received approval to release a request for proposals for landscape services, which we did in March. We received a whole bunch of proposals. I believe we received nine, right? Yeah, that's right. Nine proposals. So a lot of interest in, in the landscape program. Adrian, Marcel and I prepared a comparison chart or spreadsheet for those proposals. I believe that spreadsheet is downloadable for you as a part of the online packet. If you would like to see those. And in, in that workbook, you can see not only the kind of the, the cross section of the proposals themselves, but you can also see a cross tabulation of how we developed the criteria by which we are making a recommendation to you guys tonight. If you recall during the process when we were trying to determine what the reorganization of the Public Works Department would end up looking like, we theorized that based on some preliminary quotes and monies that we had available in the general fund, that a budget of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for landscape services would be available. As you can see, we received proposal, but most of the proposals that we received reflected what we believed the cost of the program to be. We had proposals from the range of ninety-three and a half thousand all the way up to two hundred and ninety thousand. But most were in the ninety to a hundred and fifty thousand dollar range. We are recommending a vendor to you tonight. Yellowstone Landscape. Yellowstone's proposal came in at a total of ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. So well within our budgeted resources, which if y'all recall, will assist us with freeing up resources to potentially transfer to the capital fund at year end. Something that, you know, we, we were hoping would happen, but not necessarily expecting to happen. So that, that is good news if you're to accept this recommendation. I'm going to turn the floor over to Adrian so he can talk about the evaluation process of the proposals. Why we are recommending Yellowstone to you tonight? And what a contract with Yellowstone will look like as we move forward into the future and bring that for you to consider. So Adrian.
So Yellowstone, first of all, they had a really eye popping price when it came to the, you know, the proposal itself. So they backed it up with really good references. I spoke to Jason nearly of City of John's Creek. They service thirty-one miles of right of way up there. They reviewed the contract with them several times. They also serviced the North Lake CID. And they actually took that contract from one of the other proposers, who I want a name just to add a courtesy. But they got a glowing review from them as well. And also City Atlanta Schools gave them a glowing review. And then on the site visits, you know, their sites looked good. So, you know, they made a very strong case first of all with the price. Then they backed it up with a really well written proposal that reflected that they would, you know, read the RFP in the addenda, which is importantly as I wrote it. And they're, they're a nationally skilled company with resources to bear to bear that everything land management. So from irrigation to chemical use to, you know, mowing horticultural practices. You know, the safety practices are very advanced and they outline them in detail. So they just had a very satisfying proposal, top to bottom.
Good deal.
Now Adrian, will you explain how you will supervise this contract and make sure that Yellowstone is held to account to the standard that's, that our residents believe our green spaces should, should live?
Absolutely. So in the RFP, you know, we require quarterly walks for all the sites, which at about twenty-four sites means pretty much a weekly site walk with the account manager. That's at the bare minimum. But also we're asking for site specific practices, especially for our parks. You know, Willis Park, the lake, Town Green. We treat them all as discrete entities. You know, these are all snowflakes. And the right of ways too are important. The plazas are important too. But the parks are really the centerpiece. And we're going to be asking them to adopt practices. They don't necessarily adopt for all their other customers. So we want to do things like start leaving some leaves and kind of the natural areas in some of our parks. You know, leaving some leaves in beds when we can, when it's, you know, not too aesthetically objectionable. So that will reduce on blowing that you see in parks. We're going to ask them also to, you know, be very meticulous with how they use herbicides in our public spaces. So, you know, pre-emergent is a fact of life with weed control. But we don't need all of our public sites to be soaked in post-emergent every week, which a lot of times when you go into campuses and you see pristine campuses, if you watch the landscapers, you can see them just everywhere they go. So it's going to take constant monitoring on my part to make sure that they're pulling weeds every time they're on site. You're not going to pull every single weed every time they're on site, but they need to do it every single time and make an impact over time. And that's the winning strategy for great maintenance and landscapes.
Wait a second, did I just hear you say pulling weeds?
Yes, absolutely.
Holy cow.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a good thing, right?
That's fantastic.
And that will be an alibi reason for me to make sure they're sticking to it because it's nobody's favorite thing, but it's got to be stuck to you. But if you do it every single visit, you know, you can make a big impact over time.
And it'll be less and less as time goes on.
Yeah.
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 And how often are their visits?
So forty-six visits is what they put in their schedule per year. And that's a little less than weekly. And I, I gave the, you know, the potential contractors the option to kind of give us that forty-five to fifty-two visits a year window, with the understanding that around the holidays, they're usually not staffed the same, that, you know, weather can impact some stuff. And there is a provision in the RFP too for, you know, makeup service if weather is keeping them off of our sites. So, but forty-six should be good to keep our properties policed year round. And feel good about that.
And every visit, they're going to hit every site?
Yeah, they have to, they have to police every single property. So on every one of those forty-six visits, during the dormant season, that won't be a lot of mowing. But at a minimum, it's going to be policing for litter. If there is winter pruning that needs to be done, they'll do that. If there's winter weeds that need to be pulled, those will be policed as well. So that weekly, essentially weekly policing, short a few weeks, is baked into it.
Thank you. And I'm just curious. I know, I'm not sure if this is under their purview, but, you know, there are places, well, well-worn, well-trafficed areas where grass is run down. And is, are they responsible for any of that? Is that, is that the, is that cities? So, or do they maintain that seed, anything like that?
I think, you know, they, and I think any of the, anyone who submitted a proposal would take on the turf rejuvenation if we asked them to. We have a turf care contractor right now. He wanted to work with a little bit more to see if they can turn around some spots for us. And they have, you know, we put together a program to turn around some of the turf grass areas in the city. And we're just waiting for a little bit longer for them to deliver a schedule to us and move forward with that. So, but, you know, ultimately, I would say they would probably love to take all the turf grass and start treating it because it adds to curb appeal, which adds to their portfolio. But I'm drawing a few limits there and saying that for heavily trafficked areas that see a lot of use, those are where we want the most inputs. And for more sort of decorative ornamental grass areas, you know, can we reduce our inputs? You can't have great grass without a ton of inputs. Is there a balance between curb appeal, maximizing your inputs, meaning herbicides and pesticides and stuff like that? Irrigation during drought periods. So trying to find that right balance between eco-friendly practices, but still having curb appeal that we can all be proud of.
Great, thank you. Can you tell me a little, a little bit more about the herbicides, et cetera? I mean, what I'm thinking about is the fact that, you know, kids will be playing in these parks. So when, when does that happen?
Yeah, so I, I think, you know, a pre-emergent schedule a couple of times a year with signage out there. And that's one thing I want to work with our turf care contractor with a little bit better is coordinating on the timing because they just schedule guys if they step out. And, you know, they, they always put the signs out, you know, it's required. But can we coordinate a little bit better? Can we, you know, honestly just promote what we're doing and say, hey, this is when it's going to happen? And, you know, little bit of that. And then reduce some of the pesticides used so that it's responsive. You have to see signs of it. It has, and not just signs of it, but it actually has to be a serious problem in the turf. Like one sign of a might here, there, you don't necessarily have to bust out the pesticide. So that kind of thing. And so that's, um, that's prescription-based chemical use as opposed to pre-scheduled use.
Thank you.
That's the idea.
And I noticed they didn't mention, they didn't bid on the hedge. So is that something they just don't do? Is that, oh, we need to continue to tuck that on or?
I'm curious to ask about it. So that's, uh, they, they didn't offer an explanation for it. They didn't bid on it. They're the only ones who didn't. But it has been a very popular, uh, and, you know, community project, Public Works and volunteers working at the same time. So we can find a way to continue to get it done. And it might be, you know, I think in most cases it's something they might still want to build to us as a special project if you ask for it. So it makes sense.
Adrian, really great to hear from you and so happy to hear about all of this mindful green space maintenance that we're going to be doing. That's something near and dear to my heart, you know, around the pesticides and herbicides. And hey, do we really have to blow today?
Yeah.
Is there a leaf on the ground or are we just blowing dust? You know, that sort of thing. I think that's really great. And I'm, I'm heartened to hear that you're going to be so closely monitoring and walking the sites and working with them to basically, you know, keep things to a minimum that we don't need to, we don't need to overdo pesticides and herbicides and all that. And I did just want to say, because we got a couple of emails about this, that, you know, I really believe that as a city, we should do what we can for the environment and quality of life for our residents. And gas-powered lawn equipment is a bad thing. It just is. It's also, and you know, it's also a fact of life that we have to live with and it's a necessity for organizations like ours. I was kind of disappointed that the, apparently the, the groups that were electric and battery powered were astronomically expensive. And of course, we're not going to do that. But I hope that we can just approach our use of things like blowers and stuff in the same mindful manner. You're talking about pesticides and herbicides and, and that's all I wanted to say about it is just that for folks out there who sent in emails asking if we could look at companies that might, you know, be more battery or electric. I really hope that we can start to take incremental steps toward lessening the impact on people going forward. And it sounds like that's what you want to do.
One cool thing, I'm sorry, one cool thing I can add to that is, you know, in-house, we are still keeping some green space stuff. It's just intermittent items that don't require weekly service. And so we had an opportunity to sub out some of our small engine stuff for some of the cutting edge battery powered equipment out there. And I think if we add a couple of pieces a year, start to build up our battery bank, start to build up our capacity. And then the technology does get better every year. So we can be on the lookout for these kind of no brainer pieces to add. Chainsaws, edgers, weed eaters especially are really great items right now.
That's great.
Hoping, hoping the push motors catch up soon, hoping the blowers catch up soon. But yeah, it's a, it's a pretty cool place to be right now.
Thank you, thank you for that.
Thanks, Adrian.
So, yeah, so the, at, at the, uh, the following regular meeting, we will present to you that contract for approval.
And again, that contract amount was?
Ninety-eight, three, five, zero.
Okay. I want to have it on the record. Okay. I'm good with that. We'll vote on that next time. I'll get up here. Okay. Um, okay, item number four, capital projects update. And thank you, Adrian. Capital projects update.
Yes, capital projects update. Let me cue that up real quick. All right. Let's talk capital projects, beginning with the, the one most near and dear to our hearts, the two seventy-eight complete street project. All of the funding is in place, as you, as you know. Tomorrow is the kickoff meeting between us and the, the vendor and our consulting firm to begin pushing toward construction. We anticipate construction to begin in mid-June. At this point, given the fact that the kickoff meeting is tomorrow, we do not have any additional logistic information regarding the phasing of the project. That will be developed soon. But needless to say, once the kickoff meeting happens, it's hit the ground running time. So we will spend the next forty-five to sixty days planning for the start of construction. And then at the end of that period, we'll begin. And of course, staff will provide communication as appropriate to properties who will be impacted by immediate construction. And also, we will be presenting to you prior to construction recommendations from our residential traffic calming study so that we can be ahead of any mechanisms we want to implement for that prior to construction beginning on two seventy-eight so that we are prepared for any two seventy-eight related detour traffic. So.
We're going to do a public, like, community kind of engagement on March seventh, I mean, May seventeen.
Yeah, May seventeenth, community engagement. And then I believe the second meeting in May.
We'll bring it back.
Yeah, Marco will be here to present findings and recommendations to the board.
Great, fantastic.
Yes. So we are certainly rocking and rolling there. I want to also bring y'all up to speed on several of our ongoing stormwater projects. If y'all recall, you approved a contract with Dewberry for the design of their concept for the Washington and Pine Stormwater Solution. And just to refresh your memory, one of the issues of that project is whether a pipe, which is a part of that project, is located on public right of way or on CSX right of way. And so we have been attempting to determine the location there, which will dictate whether or not we need to work with CSX to obtain an easement for work on their property. And we have kind of run into stumbling blocks at every attempt to do so. Meaning that survey work did not come back with, with clear delineation. We CCTV'd the pipe itself, but the pipe collapsed, so we couldn't get far enough to see. So we're, we're taking a next step and we will, we will keep all abreast of the situation as we move forward in that project. But just know it is, it currently being worked. And hopefully soon we will have a more substantial update about the design, any potential easement requirements, and what we anticipate the project to cost. Also, near and dear to the Hovers and many others, a quick update on Northwoods. We have one small concrete piece left to go in that project. And then we will seed. The project is ninety-eight percent of the way complete. We anticipate it to be a hundred percent completed in a, in a matter of days. And then as soon as it is, we will schedule a ribbon cutting to celebrate its completion. Couple of projects I want to turn over to Kristen to explain in further detail are other stormwater projects that are contained within our capital program. One of those is the Dunwick Drive project. The other is the Lake Shore in Wiltshire project. Let me start with Dunwick, just because we, it's a little further along in that process. If y'all recall, we completed the work on phase one of that project. Then we executed a contract with Dewberry for the design of phase two of that project. As they were designing that project, they realized that they needed to pivot on the concept and, and kind of change course in the project for the better. And I will ask Kristen to come up to the podium and explain that. And then she'll hang out while I lead y'all down another path and then she'll explain it.
So fun hearing all this stormwater talk. So with Dunwick, for some of you, I had a board up here that had information about a regenerative stormwater project due to the compaction of the soil type below, you know, the Georgia standards, it's like four inch infiltration per hour. We have less than like, I think like a tenth of an inch in that way. Like it's absurd. She called me and she was like, I don't know about this. And then as we, you know, as we kept going through the design, it also had one-to-one slopes. It was mostly like very large boulders. It kind of became more just a channel of rocks than this idea of a gorgeous like native habitat. So we did an environmental assessment. This isn't a femoral stream, which means it's not running all the time. So the state of Georgia doesn't allow you to pipe those segments. So that is the path we're going with now due to some of the things I just discussed. I think it'll end up being a little bit safer. You know, this is all between private property. So, you know, I think for the homeowners, it'll, it'll be a much cleaner and nicer design than this open channel with, you know, erosion and, and things like that, mosquitoes. So that's the idea behind Dunwick.
And we believe the problem to be better contained.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
So the outshot is?
Yeah. And I think it's going to look, it's going to look nicer. We're going to put native plants in the easement. It's going to, like, the actual erosion will be a lot easier to contain and it'll be a nicer aesthetically looking project too.
And then we have one more project that we want to talk to y'all about, which was, is also a part of our capital program. The Lake Shore and Wiltshire Concept Design is back. The estimated cost of the project following concept design is around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Two seventy-five.
Yeah, two seventy-five, excuse me. Our budget was seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand. So we now anticipate this project to come well under budget, which will free up resources to attack other stormwater projects of need. So I want, you have in your packet a contract with Dewberry, who is handling our stormwater design right now, to move forward with the design of this project for approximately fifty-eight thousand dollars, which we will bring forward to you for consideration at the next regular meeting. But I want to let Kristen explain to you what the concept is. Well, what the problem is and then what the concept is and how the concept will help alleviate the problem, so.
Or Kuna, do you mind?
And we have, yeah, we have visuals.
Love them.
Yes, and there it is.
Awesome. So if you have driven through the Lake Shore, Wiltshire Drive intersection when it's raining, you're always worried if your car is going to make it or I am. And so this, while gutter spread isn't necessarily going to change, you're going to still see water at this intersection. It is going to be relieved much, much quicker. So it's going to be adding catch basins and upsizing the pipes that we currently have. It's also the outfall. You can kind of see it going into the southwoods there at the bottom right. Pipe CC twenty-one fifty-eight, that is also going to bolster that area with additional rock and things to slow the water down before it gets to Cops Creek. So it's also, you know, as we know from the Northwoods project, this is an impaired waterway. So being able to slow that velocity and scour at that outfall is kind of a side benefit of this, but it, it will improve that as well.
So, you know, specific adding two catch basins, upsizing pipe from thirty inch to forty-eight inch, that should be able to allow us greater capacity to capture water and, and keep the water from eroding into the Southwoods and Cops Creek.
Yeah. So the, the expectation is that it's going to drain faster?
Yeah.
Okay, but we'll still see the pooling there.
Yeah.
No, nothing they could do about that.
Well, they could if you want to spend a lot of money.
Yeah.
I mean, it's over a million. And it, and it still would flood.
Yeah. It would, it would, it would take several million probably to eliminate the water collecting on the site just because of the grade of the property. So what we're trying to do is just increase the, our capacity for removing water from the site.
Sure.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, sounds like a good compromise.
And it frees up additional resources for us to attack others. So we're looking at this as a win-win.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
So you said two seventy-five for construction?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and then the fifty-eight is for the design. Yeah, so this is just from the concepts, which we got four concepts from the hydraulic model that we completed last November.
Any idea how long the build would be?
This, I, I don't have exact numbers. This is a concept, but this is so much more simple. I mean, this really is just, it's a very contained area. It's all in public right of way. So, I mean, it's a couple of months, like, and as far as road closures, I think the road closure would only be a couple of days and just be rain pipe, so.
Yeah, the concern was for the residents to move on that point.
Thank you, Kristen.
Thanks.
Thank you.
An update.
Yes.
All good news for me.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, concerns? And what are we going to do with that money?
Stormwater.
So.
Looking at our capital plan.
Yeah. How do they find such a, a nice? Realize that not as much need to be done to?
Well, it's so, right, when we go to, from modeling to concept, you know, well, and then from concept to design, you know, engineers have an idea of what they believe it's going to take. But until you get in there and realize, okay, well, if we do this, we're going to eliminate X percent of the problem. Or we can do this and eliminate even more of the problem. But it's going to cost you two million dollars to do it this way and it'll cost you three hundred thousand to do it this way. You know, that's how you arrive at the, okay, well, let's proceed with the three hundred thousand dollar option.
Patrick, in the, I'm just looking at the capital program. I'm sorry, I'm.
No, it's fine.
Probably bringing up something you haven't had a chance to think about, but.
Now I.
Is it listed in here?
Yeah.
Two seventy, which one is it?
No, this, that's Wiltshire and Lake.
Oh, this must be the old one. That's why I'm not seeing it. Never mind.
Okay, this is one of our projects that we had funded out of the SPOSS two.
Yeah, that's the old one.
Okay.
Yeah, I got it now.
Okay.
That was just the old one.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah. Appreciate it. Yeah. Because it's quite a bit.
But you know, knock on wood, this is great news, but other projects may come in higher than anticipated. So it's, you know, it's, it's fluid. So it's, you know, it's, it's fluid. Yes.
You are the master. Any questions? All right, so. The usual question was next.
Design contract for consideration at the next regular meeting for that one specific project.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, and fifty, you said fifty?
Fifty-eight, some change.
So we will be considering that next time.
Which is all budgeted.
Okay.
Yeah.
So all clear? Okay. All right, is that all we got?
That's it.
All right, public comment, yes, Jan Hover.
Jan Hover, eighty-nine birthday, well, the public works, you working alongside the landscape company? In, in what capacity, they'll get to know each other or?
Well, Adrian will be managing that contract and those teams. Our own employees will be doing other assignments, so it's not like we'll co-mingle the group.
But they'll be working on, on the landscaping too, or they'll be working.
Well, as Adrian said, non-weekly landscaping special projects will be handled in-house.
Okay, thanks.
All right, none online, none around the corner there. I'll bring it back, do I have a motion to adjourn? So we have a second. Did you get that with Mike? All right, thank you all for being here, we really appreciate it and.